I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Hold on for one second. We had a Zoom problem.
Your meeting ID followed by town.
Oh, here we go again. These things.
You enter eight, six, nine, two, two, nine, six, two, five, six, six. This meeting ID is not exempt. Please reenter your meeting ID followed by town. Enter your participant ID followed by town. Otherwise, just press town to continue. You have entered the meeting at the panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
Hi, Beth Newer.
She's on mute.
Yeah, she's probably muted. I've done a million of these already.
Bet she can't hear.
She's muted, that's why she can't hear.
Beth, could you hear us?
I think she's on mute.
We muted her. We unmuted her.
Trustee Rogers, can you hear us? Beth?
I can hear you.
Okay, there we are. Okay. Trustee Rogers?
We're doing roll call.
Well, we know she's here. Trustee Suisse?
Present.
Trustee Pasmino?
Present.
Trustee Backle?
Present.
Trustee Gray?
Present.
Trustee Caprio?
Present.
Okay. Mayor Yucich?
Present.
Present. Okay, are there any amendments to the agenda? We'll do reports and communications from the mayor and other officers. I'll start it off. I am happy to report that our region is now in phase four. We are continuing to make progress in the right direction. I also want to thank the road district crews and our maintenance staff for their hard work during the various snow events that we have had. They have kept us all safe and open throughout the village. Then, we got a letter from a resident. All too often, we receive more complaints than compliments from various people in the village. However, this week, we received a very nice handwritten letter from a resident, Margie Murphy, that I would like to read out loud. Starts off, "Hi. I had to write to say that I am so impressed with Heritage Park and its display of Christmas lights. I have lived here for 30 years, and I'm a huge fan of Homer Glen. I have watched it grow slowly but surely. My boys graduated from Lockport High School and both went to college and now have what I can say are really good jobs. My one son loved this area so much that he and his wife have purchased their first home in Homer Glen. He has been telling me about the park for some time now, and I finally went there. The second time, I brought friends from out of town, and they were very impressed, too. I've returned, and I get some exercise, and in the spring, will return when the weather is cooperating. So once again, thank you all for doing such a fantastic job. Your hard work makes our town shine. Sincerely, Margie Murphy." Thank you, Ms. Murphy, for the words. It's nice to hear. So we will go to, we'll go to the trustees for now. We'll start out with Trustee Gray. Any reports?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Reporting on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Committee, last night, we held our first meeting of the year. The committee was able to go over some of the major village accomplishments from 2020. Our 2020 business activity recap was, we had over 85,000 square feet of commercial space filled as a result of new and retained businesses. We had 20 new businesses opened in the village in 2020. We had over $4 million of private investment and improvements by new and existing businesses. And ongoing projects include the Square at Goodings Grove, the townhouses. So far, we're up to about 30 building permits out of a total of about 76 that we've approved to be built eventually. The Gas &amp; Wash at 159th and Gauger, it opens tomorrow, February 11th, with a planned ribbon cutting on March 19th. This is also going to be the site of our Western Gateway sign, which will be built soon, presumably as soon as the weather starts to break. Our newest businesses recently opened have been Floral Bliss Florist at Jewel Center, Fratelli's Pizza, Sam's Restaurant and Bar, Be Well Physical Therapy, State Farm Agent Megan Good's Office at the Ace Hardware Plaza. Other businesses are coming soon on deck are The Phoenix Kitchen and Cocktails. They're doing build-out, and they're hoping for a late spring opening. Game On Bar and Grill at the Megaplex continues to make progress. Pet Supplies Plus is in for a building permit right now, and they're looking for maybe a late summer opening if possible. On Friday, February 5th, Development Director Patch, Village Manager Fridling, and myself had a productive brainstorming session with members of the Heritage Corridor Business Alliance, our chamber. We discussed ways we can work cooperatively to advance the village and the village businesses. The Economic Development Department is working on a recruitment brochure and a virtual road show, and they've already activated a welcome new businesses page on the village website. A virtual ribbon-cutting campaign is also being developed to show our support for businesses opening during the COVID restrictions. I encourage all to go to the website and view all the activity and see the links to the new businesses. We certainly want to support them, and as always, shop and dine in Homer Glen. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Gray. Trustee Backle?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety had a very constructive meeting last week. We had a number of residents from the Long Run Creek area that were in attendance. Long Run Creek residents have been very motivated and done a great job clearing the large logs and trees from the creek and its tributaries. We're now in contact with Homer Tree to assist us in the removal of the piles of logs that they've accumulated. This has been a large undertaking, and a lot of the work has been done not only by the residents but staff as well, and I'd like to thank a lot of those behind the scenes that have been doing a lot of work to help me along with this project, and especially Mayor Yucich and Manager Fridling, Joe, Mike, and Carlo for all of their help. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Backle. Trustee Rogers?
No report.
Okay. Trustee Suisse?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick mention that we are still, we still have a few openings on the Environment Committee, so if anyone is interested, please contact the village or send me an email at Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Suisse. Trustee Caprio?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to add on to a little bit of public services and safety, it was a very constructive meeting. I want to just add the fact that not only did we get a good turnout from the Long Run Creek residents, it made us really ponder the thought that we really need to make a bigger effort in the village as a whole to really look at our waterways and make sure that we're trying to accommodate and clean up those creeks along the way as a consistent message to the community. Aside from that, Parade and Festival, we, Parade and Festival, Festival, we met, and we are moving forward. We do have, we do not have alternate plans for a socially-distanced fest, so we are moving forward with a full-blown festival for 2021 with the 20th anniversary approaching us. We want to make sure it is extravaganza above and beyond the things that we've done in the past, and, you know, we're just moving forward with those plans. So I appreciate the opportunity to report that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Caprio. Trustee Pasmino?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing much going on in parks. Our last meeting, we were not able to convene due to the weather, but we are working on some new ideas and programs, which we'll have for you in the next few coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Pasmino. Village Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that the Village of Homer Glen and Home Sweet Homer Glen are continuing to collect candies, Dukos, and cards for our seniors until February 12th at 3:00 p.m., and I just wanted to thank all the residents who already contributed. So thank you.
Thank you. Village Attorney?
No report.
Public Safety officials? Village Manager?
The only report that I have calling up on Trustee Pasmino, we will have the next board meeting, the approval of the special events and the programs for the upcoming year. We're kicking off our sponsorship program, which we weren't really able to do last year, which is a good thing. We've had a lot of interest from our local businesses, and we are in the, in the middle of planning for our 20th birthday party, so there'll be more information coming out to the community soon on all the events we're going to have planned over a number of months.
Thank you. And I had one question. We did have a resident that was asking about impact fees, if we were going to lower them, but we haven't changed anything, correct?
No, we haven't touched our impact fees. In fact, I think about five years ago, we lowered them considerably. We did a comparison. One of the new fees that we do have that the board just recently adopted was our recapture fees for our new water and sewer main. So those are ones that we are, that are on the books right now. We had our first payment from Gas &amp; Wash this past week prior to their opening, but no, all of our impact fees have stayed the same.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to public comment. All right, we're going into the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the village board and will be enacted by one motion. Is there a motion to approve the following items? One, the accounts payable for the period of January 29th, 2021 through February 11th, 2021, in the amount of $103,624.70. Two, payment of the Village of Homer Glen's December legal bills from Mahoney, Silverman &amp; Cross, LLC, in the amount of $15,957.12. Three, payment of Tria Architecture's invoices, number 3540 and 3569, for Heritage Park Designs in the amount of $22,369.27. Number four, pay estimate number four from Len Cox &amp; Sons Excavating for the 2019 Drainage Improvement Program in the amount of $184,427.83. Number five, the village's 2021 membership dues for the Will County Governmental League in the amount of $17,429.83. Number six, the purchase of five Starcom portable radios for the Homer Glen Emergency Management Agency in the amount of $22,993.65. And number seven, a motion to release a remaining letter of credit balance for a letter of credit number LGMIS NY-030730 in the amount of $98,015 for the Firestone Development located at 14018 South Bell Road.
Does it move?
Trustee Suisse?
I'll second.
Trustee Backle? Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Caprio?
Aye.
Trustee Pasmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, is there a motion to approve a five-year contract extension with New Way DBA Homewood Disposal Service, Inc., and waive competitive bidding process?
Does it move?
Trustee Caprio?
I'll second.
I have one letter I would like to read about New Way, so people do understand and the residents understand what we're doing and why we did it. Trustee Caprio, you want to start off, though, so we can answer a question of why it was tabled?
Well, I just really want to thank everybody for my patience, your patience in tabling the agenda item. I was battling COVID the week of our board meeting, and I really did not have an opportunity to review the packet to my fullest ability. I just want to say that I'm fully supportive of this motion. I want to also let everyone know the benefits that are just added with this new renewal of the contract, the e-waste pickup, senior citizen monthly discount, you know, the frees, things that, you know, comparing it to our peer communities is just unbelievable, the service we get, the in-kind service we get just from the events that Homer Glen has put on over the years, the excellent customer service. You know, over the last several years, they've been a stellar partner of ours, and I really appreciate that. We all have to understand that, I'm sure their costs increased over the year, you know, you know, due to COVID and things of that nature, and I just want to, I put myself out there to say I'm appreciative of a great partner for the village, so.
Thank you. In July 2016, the village entered into a five-year extension agreement with Homewood Disposal Services for the collection of refuse, recycling, and yard waste. This contract will expire in June, but does have existing language that allows both parties to extend the contract. The current contract includes an annual 2% increase, a senior citizen discount of $3 a month, franchise terms that include revenue sharing with the community, and in-kind services for village garbage pickup and for our community special events. Homewood Disposal has been a great corporate citizen to Homer Glen. They have always gone an extra mile for any of our residents, community groups, and the village. They provide excellent customer service, and we receive no complaints from any of our residents. Over the last year, due to COVID, their collection had increased 25%. This is due to more people working from home and families staying at home. While this created significant burden on their operations, they never once came to the village to seek additional assistance, nor did their customer service levels ever go down. The proposed terms of the contract extension will include the following: a 2.5% increase for years one through three, and for years four and five, it goes to a 3%, which equals the following. For 2021, your garbage is going to go up 65 cents a month. Your bill will be 2582. In 2022, it'll be 2647. In '23, it'll be $27.13. In '24, it'll be $27.81. 2025 will be $28.64. And in 2026, it'll be $29.50. The proposed increase will add up to about $3.68 a month for garbage pickup. The senior rate will be frozen for the first year of the extension, and the monthly discount will increase from $3 a month to $4 a month. The revenue sharing will increase from 1.75 to 2% years one through three, and 2.25% years four through five. The village's contract with Homewood Disposal has always had a revenue sharing component included. This is a normal and accepted business term and is considered a franchise fee, where we allow or authorize one company to offer its services exclusively to the entire community, which is allowed by state law. We also have other similar agreements with Comcast, ComEd, et cetera. The average annual amount anticipated during the five-year term will be $54,728. This fee can be paid in many ways, in different forms. Some pay a flat fee for the franchise agreement, others share revenue, and others do a hybrid mix. In our case, we require a hybrid mix. Revenue sharing, reduced rates for our seniors, and in-kind services for free. This is the best deal for our residents and this community. Some critics have unfairly and inaccurately called this a kickback, implying that we use these funds to cheat our residents. The truth is, these fees paid by Homewood Disposal to the village are for the community. The village receives these funds and uses them to pay for other village services, such as our public safety contract with Will County Sheriff Department. We also use a quarterly environmental fee for environmental and sustainability projects and programs, so the term "kickback" is unfair and does not accurately represent the village nor the village board. The in-kind services for the village and you, our residents, real dollars. We do not pay for garbage collection for our village parks and facilities. We do not pay for garbage pickup rental from restrooms, cleaning attendants, for any of our special events. This totals over $11,500 in goodwill annual savings that we otherwise would have to pay for. Lastly, we are partnering with Homewood Disposal to bring an e-waste curbside pickup to every home in the village. For nominal fee of 50 cents per month, this is an enhanced service at a very low price. You can't buy a small cup of coffee for 50 cents. We have compared our peer communities' existing contracts to ours, and our residents are getting a very good deal. Additionally, we also consider not only the level of customer service, but also the impact of resident disruption by switching companies. Homewood Disposal has the business relationship and possesses, possesses in place with our Pickup, building containers, and customer service, every household in Homer Glen would be impacted with a change in services. For all of these reasons, I support the proposed extension of the contract with Homewood Disposal. So I'll turn it over to the trustees, but I'd like to get, which one do you want to come up from? Come on up, Frank. So Frank here is from Homewood. If you have any questions, you'd be more than happy to answer them, and if you have any comments or concerns, bring them up. How about we start with Ruben?
Thank you. I have, I've been in Homer for a long time, and my business is in Homer, so I mean, I salute you guys. You guys do a wonderful job. Like, you've never had any issues. And, you know, from what I've seen as far as the business and my home, the price seems fair. So my issue's not really with you guys, it's kind of internally here, and maybe it's ignorance to the process, but it, from the information that I have, it shows here that the last RFQ that went out here was in 2008. Am I correct? And then everything's been extended from that point forward, so nothing's really gone out to other companies to compare.
That's correct.
Okay. That's the only part that I get kind of wary with, because extensions are nice, but, you know, I'm proud, I'm proud of the fact that Homer is very transparent, you know, we've won awards on our accounting rules and guidelines, and this is one of those types of things that, to me, are kind of a standard to go out to bid. That contract specifically was every five years, correct? I get it, it seems very easy to extend it with the services and everything that are provided, but, you know, as far as, do we truly know that we can't do better somewhere else? I guess that's my question. That was one, and that's not one really for him, it's kind of for us here. And then as far as the revenue share itself, specifically, I know some of that goes into our environmental account, some of that goes to our Will County Sheriff's contracts.
Our general fund, yeah.
What else does that go into?
That's it.
That's all.
So there's two fees. There's the revenue sharing fee, that is the 1.75 currently. That fee goes into our general fund. It gets deposited in our general fund, and it goes to support such things. That's where our repair sheriff's contract out, for example. That's only about, that $54,000 average is what we would receive on an annual basis. Obviously, that's not enough to cover that entire contract. We have an over $4 million contract for that, but that's where we go. So that goes in the general fund. The environmental fee that's collected quarterly, not monthly, that goes into our environmental fund, and so like, as you and Trustee Suisse sit on the Environmental Committee, the different programs and the different events that are hosted, like the stargazing program, the cleanup, the Homer Glen cleanup programs, those things, that is what those, those fees are obligated to that environmental fund, and that is the only thing that that environmental fund can, those funds can be used for.
And Carrie, I believe when we have hazardous waste, that comes out of there, that's a huge amount that even though Will County Green helps support it.
Yeah.
You know, when we have those big recycling events and hazardous waste, there's a big chunk comes out of, that's where it goes to.
In addition to that, I just wanted to add, just, you know, from an outside guy looking in, because obviously I've been here for two years, and I, it's still a learning curve every time, but I compare it to what I do in my business, and obviously, you know, I'm the final decision where that bid goes, right? So that's not the case here. Obviously, we are the stewards of, you know, of the residents, and we have to make sure that they get the best deal possible. I just feel like, you know, something that goes from 2008 to now and all those extensions is just an easy way to kind of pass it along, and I, I know, I just think we could do better as far as the process, not as far as the vendor itself, because I actually compared them to a lot of different vendors, and they win every year. So you guys are, you know, that's not a problem. But again, it's not about the company itself, I think it's about our process here internally. And since this was so long ago, I mean, you guys weren't even involved back then, you know, who knows? So I don't know, that's just a comment I had to say. Thanks.
Trustee Caprio? Do you have anything else, or?
No, I think, I think I've said enough. I think the vendor is great. I think, I tend to agree that there's always a process in place that we should, you know, go out to bid, but when you have a partner, to me, it just seems the right fit, and there's comparables that we've had, and we have in our board packet, that show us to other communities where we stand. And there was a time, and I've talked to a couple people about this, where we had many garbage pickups in this community, and I think other people on this board will speak to that in a sense that, you know, you don't want four garbage trucks down, driving down your street every week. So I'm perfectly content. And I, again, thank you for allowing me to dig into the information a little bit.
You're welcome. Trustee Suisse?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I do agree with Trustee Caprio. I think this is a great contract. There is, Ruben, there is a analysis in the back of your packet showing, you said we don't look at anything, but there is a contract renewal analyst, analysis there in the back of the packet. So anyways, I think you do great. I've been on some of those committees where you were out there supporting the different events, and I think this is a fantastic contract.
Well, to touch on just one quick point that Carlo, Trustee Caprio, made, prior to New Way, we did have several different, it was kind of like the Wild, Wild West, we had several different garbage pickups, and in my particular subdivision, Woodbine, we had, at one time, there was two and possibly three different garbage services that were coming down, and we had garbage pickup three days a week. So it was a, it was a race of garbage trucks down Eagle Ridge Drive, so I've seen both sides.
You all set?
I'm sorry, that's it.
Okay. Trustee Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with just about everybody's comments. We're getting a great deal here, I think. You know, I've gotten numerous emails and messages from residents saying that, you know, like, like the letter you read earlier, you know, that we get great service, we get a lot of in-kind stuff, we've mentioned some of those things tonight. The, the impact of the Environment Committee is very large, as well as our, you know, helping to offset the prices that we put into the recycling events that we do. I think that's twice a year, once a year. You know, we do split the cost of that with Will County, so that certainly helps us to offset that. You know, it's been said that we need to make sure we're getting a great deal for the residents, and I feel very comfortable that all the data matrix that we've been shown, we are getting a great deal. I mean, this, this vendor wants to raise their prices 60 cents a month, which, you know, no raise should be looked at flippantly, but certainly that's, the amount of the raise per per year being $9, essentially $9. I mean, I think that according to the matrix, we're paying somewhere in the $25 a month range, and our next closest one, New Lennox, I think it is, is $35. So just in one month, we're already more than we're going to pay in a year, you know, and the offset. So I think that, you know, while we certainly want to be sensitive to that, and, you know, that's why we, you know, that's why something like this was not just part of the consent agenda or something. It can't be. We have to talk about this when we are going to kind of circumvent the bidding process. So, but I think that when you weigh it all out, we do have the authority to circumvent that bidding process, and I think that we're showing that we've done all the work that needs to be done to justify circumventing that process. So I thank Homewood for being a great vendor to the village, to the residents. I look forward to continuing, going on with them, and I think this is a good deal. And I'd also just like to mention that, you know, going out to bid is not always a guarantee that we're going to get anything better, or a lower price, or that this vendor might even come in in the bidding process. They might, you know, sometimes you take contracts that are, were good for a long time, and maybe the vendor is, you know, starting to move a little bit, but maybe the industry's gone completely differently. You don't want to see a grand jump either, you know? You want to try to keep them in this kind of an arc instead of a very high arc. So I think this benefits us in the long run. So that concludes my remarks.
And my closing on it would be, I've worked with Tom since we started. This is when we did have garbage pickup three to four days a week, and trucks coming through our village constantly. And this was back in 2008. I got introduced to Tom by the mayor of Country Club Hills. He was doing the work out there. Everything he had told us he would do, he did. If we needed anything special, we made a phone call, it was done. They've added on a lot more than what we expected. And when you stop and think about it, $65, $70, even if it was a dollar, you go for gasoline right now, you're spending $1.50 more than what you were six months ago. I can't understand how we could, why there's even a need to put it out there. It's, a bid for the most part is when you have a contractor, you have an architect, you have a builder, you have someone who's going to be paid by the village. We're not paying the bill to the garbage company. It's the residents that are here. And the residents here, I haven't had one person tell me that they don't like the way you're doing business. So I got to give you guys kudos. You're doing so much for us, and then I don't even think I mentioned electronic devices, which, two times, oh, that's right, because it was a $0.50 surplus. But they'll come by, and they'll pick up a refrigerator, they'll pick up a TV, they'll pick up the stuff. Nobody else does that. They charge you. And this company has been absolutely phenomenal, and I'm very happy that you're back with us. Well, hopefully, we're going to have the vote in a few minutes. So Beth, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
All right. So what we can do then is call the roll, please.
Trustee Pazmino?
No.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Caprio?
Aye.
I'll be in there.
Mayor Yugich.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Guys, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure doing business with you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Next, is there a motion to authorize staff to enter into an agreement with one or more firms to assist the village in the removal of debris from the creeks for a total not to exceed amount $50,000? It is understood that as part of the aforementioned authorization, the village board approves the use of burning as an acceptable method to dispose of materials removed from the creek. Is there a motion?
I so motion.
Trustee Backle and trustee Caprio?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to start. When I was first appointed to the Public Safety Board, I was approached by trustee Suisse, and she asked me if I would go to Long Run Creek and visit the flooding that the residents were incurring down there. And she asked if I would take a look and help the residents. So I want to show you first, this is the Long Run Creek watershed plan. It's 262 pages that was put together in 2014, and I've read it. It's a complex problem, and there's no doubt. For 40 years, the residents along Long Run Creek have been dealing with this flooding on their own with very little help. And we do understand that most of the properties are in floodplain. We know that, the residents know that, yet it's still a watershed that runs through our village. And this is the first time, I was told by several of the residents that I've met with in Long Run Creek, and they told me that this is the first time in 40 years that the residents are getting some help from the village. So it's my goal that we give these residents some relief here, and I realize that this is going to be an ongoing problem, keeping up with the creek, but it's a problem that we really can't ignore. That's all I have.
Thanks, trustee Backle. Any other comments on it?
Yeah, I would like to add on to trustee Backle's comments. He and I both chair the Public Services and Safety Committee. As I said in my earlier comments, this is not just a, while we take on this endeavor with Long Run Creek, it's not just a, I think we need to look at this as a larger village application, the waterways of the village, because they matter to the village and they matter to the environment. So Long Run Creek, thanks to trustee Suisse, was just, and Mrs. C, if she's here, I don't know if she is, but was just our first endeavor for Brock and I to be sitting on the Public Services and Safety Committee. And Brock has taken it by the horns. And I told Brock earlier conversations, just so it's public record, I said, not both of us need to work on this. We'll work together in tandem in the scene, behind the scenes, but Brock loves his duck hunting, loves to go out in creeks. So Brock has taken that adventure on, and I think we've done a great deal of work in five or six months, and we had a good turnout of those residents. But I think it's a larger effort than just one creek. It's the waterways of the village. It's the environment of the village, and so we need to look at a bigger picture type thing for future budgets, and I've already spoken to manager filing about that. And so I'm hoping the board will support this and go forward.
I agree. Anyone else? Well, this is something that we want to get the, if we could get the entire village involved in it. Years ago, trustee Kostin, myself, when I was a trustee, we started cleaning it down by John Coys.
Oh, yeah.
And the two of us, that was probably the biggest mistake we made at that time. We figured we could conquer everything. It conquered us. Knocked the hell out of me. But it has to be done, because you have too many flooding problems that if we all get together as a village, and for the most part, we do have the volunteers that step up to the plate, we can get this taken care of to where the flooding definitely eases around here. Because right now, if we do have a big flood, and it seems like it's, every year we have one, a hundred-year flood is, you know, a yearly thing. So I appreciate what you're doing and what you're doing, and I'm sure that this board would love to help too, not asking anyone to go in there and start yanking all the trees out, but if everyone could kind of chip in to get this, you know, the residents down there need help, and it would help everyone in the village. So let's see what we can do to put this out to where we can get more help. Obviously, we're going to wait till it's a little warmer, but...
Well, yeah, you can.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. When I was on Public Safety, this was, this is, you know this, you were on Public Safety when you were a trustee mayor, and it's been an ongoing problem. And I want to commend trustee Backle and trustee Caprio for finally getting this over the, or at least the first goal line, because it's going to be an ongoing thing. I'm glad trustee Caprio is working on getting some budget input on this as well going forward. But also, this goes to our other endeavor of trying to start our public works department. Something like this can easily become part of that, you know, that annual maintenance, those annual programs where we start to make this a little bit more robust and let it have a life of its own, and it has a place where there are professionals who can go out and take care of things like this. I'm not advocating that we're going to go out onto private property, every piece of private property, and solve everybody's problems, but if the residents can meet us halfway and start to drag some of the stuff out of there, at least when we have our own public works and our own type of way of answering these things, maybe we can start to send our own crews out there at least to go and pull these things, you know, get to get rid of them, for them. So this is a win for the entire village. As you guys have mentioned, and we all know, the creeks, while they're great to look at and everything, they are our drainage system in this village. You know, we all go through a lot of subdivisions where it's open ditch and swale. That's where most of this goes, you know? I mean, a lot of this just goes into those, it finds its way to those creeks, so that's why you see them so swollen after a rainstorm. So a backup somewhere on a piece of property over in Spring Creek or something where the homeowner's either incapable or doesn't have the financial means to mitigate that, that affects everybody in the village. So, you know, while we don't want to try to solve everybody's problems, we do have some responsibility here, I think, so I think this is a great thing.
And that was well put.
Great points.
Anyone else? Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Caprio?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, is there a motion to approve a proposal from Imperial Surveillance for camera equipment, outdoor wireless network, video server, video server and service contract to install and maintain a video security system for Heritage Park in the not-to-exceed amount of $71,250 plus $1,677 a month service, contract subject to village manager and attorney policy review?
I so move.
Trustee Caprio?
I'll second it.
Trustee Backle? Discussion.
I guess I can start. Again, this is part of Public Services and Safety. Great, great addition to the things that we are completing in this village. It is to the utmost importance to keep safety in mind with this park, with the entire village, with the ability to add on to this system. I scrutinized it very well. I deal in these systems often. I questioned, Sean brought this to us, I think, and he did a great job of vetting the contractors. This is not the most expensive bid, and it's not the least expensive bid. And that's the one thing I'll go back again. I hate when we all say, let's take the least expensive bid. You have no clue what service you're going to get from that least expensive bid. So this is an added asset to the community. It's an added asset to the police force. It's an added asset to the residents, the parents of these children and teenagers that are playing in our parks. And this is not a monitoring system. This is not big government. I want to put that out there. This is an ability to pull footage as needed, and I think it's a great asset. I did question the monthly service fee a little bit, but it's technology. It's IT-related, and unfortunately, those come with costs. But this is a grow-in-to system. This is not something that we've, it's capped out at the current state, so we can grow into the system. I think it supports 100 cameras.
Mm-hmm.
And we're talking about 17. So we've got plenty of room to grow. And, you know, I just, I think this is a great asset to the village, and I think we need to spend the money to do this.
Well, like you said, we want to keep everyone safe. Is there any, Stark, you have anything?
Yeah, Public Safety, we discussed this on Wednesday, and I'd like to commend Sean for his due diligence in his presentation. The system literally sells itself. It's incredible what, how it can protect our residents and visitors to the park. And I think long run, in the long run, it'll be something that we can expand on, and there's nothing more important than our safety. This contributes to that greatly.
I agree, and I'm sure our residents will be a lot more secure, too. Are there any other comments, or? Okay, madam clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Caprio?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, is there a motion to accept a performance bond in the amount of $32,436.80 in lieu of a letter of credit as financial security for the pet supplies development at the southwest corner of 143rd Street and Bell Road?
I'll move.
Trustee Gray?
I'll second.
Trustee Suisse? We're all covered. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Suisse?
Aye.
Trustee Caprio?
Aye.
Trustee Pazmino?
Aye.
Trustee Gray?
Aye.
Trustee Backle?
Aye.
Trustee Rogers?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Then all I need right now is a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Yeah, I like it when it, I like it when it works out that way.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.